Has everybody had a chance to review that? If there's no objections or discussions, I entertain a motion to approve the request for the five case to start. I think now that the Pacific Center and go down through Edgewood and back up, let's get back to the Pacific Center.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
Second, if councilman knows any discussion. Chief, do you know if they've contacted you all about any help they may need for the road closure that is calling this Tri-County five case that's going to be on Burma Festival week?
We have sent out a couple of emails to them and we've not got a response back yet.
I guess we'd have a motion to second. I'd ask for some discussion about probably would have some condition that they would have to get in contact with the city police department about traffic control and safety coordination.
I'll amend my motion to reflect that, Mayor.
Okay. We'll let them know that they can get in touch with your office, Chief. Okay, we have amended motion to include the condition that the city police department would have to be contacted about safety and the street crossing closures. Any other discussion? Seen none, all in favor, City Attorney Pappas saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Next request is for the Farm to Table Main Street event. They've asked for East Flagee from North Third Street to Second to be closed August 25th from 12:30 to 10:30 that evening. I think there's some discussion also about whether the alleys might need to be closed, but primarily it's East Flagee that really needs to be closed so they can get set up and host their events. They did this again last year was, I think, very well attended and everybody had a lot of very positive things to say about it, so I think it's a good project that Main Street's sponsoring. Anybody interested in making a motion to approve the request?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve Barstown Institute's request for the Farm to Table event.
Okay, the motion, if councilman knows, to have a second?
Second.
Second, if councilman knows, and any other discussion?
Just one thing, Mayor. Wonder Chief, last year they had fire trucks set up and did like a misting or something like that and the kids were, they really, really enjoyed that. Is that something that we're looking at again this year?
They have contacted those two down there, so.
And they had the announcer set up. Really hot and.
Any other discussion? Seen none, all in favor, City Attorney Pappas saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, the next items on the agenda, I think, is why most people are here this evening. We've received a number of requests for some funding and donation from the city. This is, I think, a part because there's a lot of need out there, but also this is the first year that the city has put a line item specifically for some local grants, community development grants. Outside of, in the past, we've used potentially funds from the council and the mayor's office to support some of these causes, so this year's a little different. With that being said, I would ask City Attorney Tim Butler to speak to it. These donations are governed by KLC regulations as well as our own municipal order, so I'll let Tim discuss that before we get into it.
Thank you, Mayor. And as the council knows and for the public's benefit, we've, well, the days of old where you came in and you had made a request and city gave you money and you just walked away and we never saw you again, you'd wait, thank this, those days are gone. There's certain criteria, and these criteria are laid out in particular in the KLC legal handbook, and for the council's purposes, there are attached, there's an attachment where it says donation guidelines. City clerk was gracious enough to put that attachment on there, and that, the attachment includes the page from the KLC legal handbook as well as a donation request application form that was drafted a few years ago in part, mostly actually by Councilman Hagan, who was, this was a particular interest of his, and then there was a municipal order that was also adopted at that time. So the main criterias are that the city must receive benefit from the appropriation, and it's got to be an activity in which the city can independently engage, it's got to have basically a broad appeal, broad benefit, and that we should, we being the city should have some control of the, either the organization or how the money is spent. So what we've done is we've tried to provide by way of application, the opportunity for organizations to provide justification for those factors. The other thing that we're going to try to do and be a little more conscientious about is then following up with the organization within a five-month period to see, to ask for documentation that would provide proof that the money was spent for the purposes for which it was allocated. I have gone through with these criteria, and this is, this is my opinion, but I've gone through the request, and the only one that I would have a particular concern with would be E. Nelson County Distinguished Young Women Program, and if you're here for this, I apologize, but that was, that's, the request is for a, basically a scholarship, and obviously a scholarship would benefit, primarily benefit the recipient and the recipient only. I'm sure it's a fine program, but just, I don't believe that it meets these criteria that we have here. The others arguably would be things that would be subject to, you know, appropriation or a grant, if you will, from the council with that documentation being provided after the fact. And if there's any questions or anything, I'll try to flesh that out if there's something you all need clarification on or want input on.
Is there anyone here from the Young Women Program?
I didn't see anybody glaring at me, so.
Aye, thank you, Tim. So with that being said, we'll take up the first request on the agenda is Old Barstown Village, is there a sponsor from the council on that one?
There is, Mayor. I would like to introduce and sponsor the Old Barstown Village Incorporated's request. And this more or less involves maintenance issues to the cabins that are on the property, which are on city property. They're asking for a donation of $10,000, which would be appropriated or used to chink, which is the filling between the log structure, if you will, that provides weatherproofing and continues their existence. In accordance with municipal order in 2016, which Tim Butler had referred to, 2016-06, looking at the, the, the city receives a benefit by, you know, the tourism and aesthetics of the site by helping to preserve these structures. And the city will have control, or should have control, of how the funds are allocated or are used after they're allocated and how they're spent. The city will monitor the results, you know, after the work that had been completed, and then the donation does benefit the public at large since our city, you know, our members of the city use it regularly as well as tourists. So I'll open the floor for discussion as far as the amount.
Also, I just want to make note, and we've got a couple of things on, historic preservation is obviously an activity that the city can and does engage in, so that's why those really, I didn't, wasn't particularly concerned about those.
Mayor, would it be out of order to, to ask that we have all the requests presented out before we discuss them individually? I don't think so. I think, I think we all realize that the requests exceed the amount of money we have in our budget, just tonight, the first round of the requests, so the problem might have to come to some compromise on the requests we feel like can handle. That's my opinion. Does anybody else feel like we got them all being presented?
It might be, and it's wise, go to them all and the amounts requested and then come up with some sort of allocation. Now, I guess, I disclosed this before, but on the Old Barstown Village, I'm on the board and been on the board for a long time, but I have, it's a nonprofit, I have no financial incentive or gain or whatever, and, and whatever happened tonight, so.
Tim, do you think we could have, have each one presented and have discussion before we have motions?
I, I think that it might be appropriate to go ahead and go through and talk about each of the amounts requested in particular. And if there's one that, that you all might feel doesn't meet the requirements, you know, that would obviously affect the amount due. Also, you know, when I first saw this, I called Tracy and said, you know, what's the amount? One of the things, and I think you may have inadvertently created a little bit of an issue here with your budgetary amount, Mayor, as you mentioned, because July 1st, we have a new budget, and here we are, July, you know, early July, and we've got all the requests and may spend up the entire budget, and there may be projects later that come along. So I don't know how we deal with that. That's obviously you all, not me, but yes, I think it would be appropriate to go ahead and talk about each and definitely the amount request.
Okay. Somebody's okay with that, then we'll proceed. Go ahead with the second one, which would be the Stephen Foster Story.
Well, Mayor, I would like to sponsor the, that donation request as well. I think, of course, our city attorneys already reviewed it, and it does meet the criteria for us to consider it, and I don't think I need to go in the background on the need there. The need's substantial, and the request is a donation of $10,000, so I think the, of course, the request is just a small fraction of what they, they want to need to accomplish their projects, so on that basis, I would sponsor it and subject discussion of the amount.
And just so that you all are aware, I thought, discussed this with the mayor, this is actually on property now leased by another governmental entity.
But that makes it even clearer.
It makes it even clearer, it really kind of takes it out of the, the realm of donation to a private organization, although I think it goes through the drama, it goes to maintenance on a facility that is currently leased by Nelson Fiscal Court, so I think that makes it a little clearer.
Especially since there may be capital improvements or maintenance order.
Yes, improvements.
To the lease or improve.
Okay, I think the next one that I know we have a sponsor is the Nelson County Black Citizens Arts Council.
Yes, Mayor, if you, if I may, I'd like to make the request, so we have the Nelson County Black Citizens Arts Council. They have the old Bowman Cherry Schoolhouse, it's over on the corner of First and Reshir, that's in major need of renovation, which technically I think the city actually is the lease on, but it's been, it's been, in the years past, it's been a facility where youth of color can go out and utilize their, their fine arts skills, and most of the money requested, which is $5,000, is to, is to maintain the maintenance of it and get it back in shape before it can be used again, but it's a functioning, it's a functioning entity for the, for the city.
Thank you, Bill. Then the next one is Butter Milk Day's Foundation.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to sponsor that one. This is the 24 Annual Butter Milk Day Event. That is most certainly, is truly a, a community homecoming. We have a lot of people that come in from other areas out of town, some people out of state, actually. It's a three-day event, and I think last year there was between like $4,000 and $4,500, excuse me, $4,000 and $4,500 people there. It is, most certainly meets the criteria. We have been donating to them for years, and I think last year the request was $2,000, and the money that they get, they use to deal with parking and other issues like that, so.
Security?
Security, thank you. Parking and security, so very worthwhile.
All right, these four have sponsors. I don't think we have a sponsor for the other one that Tim mentioned earlier, the Distinguished Young Women's Program. Unless someone wants to bring that before the council.
I think it's a good program. I mean, if it doesn't meet the criteria, we can't do it. It's been around for a long, long time. It was run by the J.C.'s and, but I, gosh, it's been 30, it's been around 30 or 40 years, I think, so it's, it's, it used to be known as Junior Miss.
Junior Miss, yeah.
But, you know, if it doesn't meet the criteria, and, you know, of course, they just kind of gave us a, a sponsorship form, so I don't.
It wasn't specific.
Yeah, but there wasn't any specific where it was going to go, or we're just generally sponsoring a scholarship, so unless they rewrite it where it will work, you know, I don't think we can consider it.
Well, I have a question. So on their form, it has ads. So could the city of Barstown put an ad thanking them for coming to the city of Barstown? That's not allowed either, I'm just asking. It's Junior Miss, and it's going to a Nelson County woman, no one other than Nelson County, so could that, could we sponsor an ad? We are the city. I'm just asking, I don't know.
I think that since it would benefit, it's an, that's an activity that the city could engage in, but I think that it, that when you start looking at new benefits, I think it still goes back to that scholarship for that one individual. We've had one, and Councilman Williams, Councilman Copeland, maybe you all remember, we had something similar to this that came up that we did not allow, either because it met, it did not meet a, we, it was sponsoring somebody or some, some scholarship or something.
Tim, if it were to benefit the, the festival itself and its, and its operation rather than a scholarship?
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I'm agreeing here that if it's rewritten, you know, as Councilman Kelly said, if it's rewritten somehow to, to address the criteria, I'm not saying it might not be. The way it stood in my mind, I just, and based on that prior experience, I was thinking that it did not meet the criteria.
Okay, I have one more, just one more question. I just want to make sure. All right, so in their letter, though, it, it states that, it's telling you why Junior Miss or Distinguished Young Women are here, and then it goes into the advertising of it. It's not asking us to give to the scholarship, it's asking us to, what I see, be a gold, silver, or bronze donor, which would, it's a sponsor. So they have levels of 1,500, 350, and 150. So I'm thinking that it was just for an ad to, for the program, not so much as to award them with a scholarship. Am I reading this wrong?
Well, that's a benefit to the sponsorship, is the way I read it. They, they have the levels of, of benefits, benefits goal, full-page advertisement, logo name, business name, and that is the sponsorship levels. And again, I think that when you start looking at, for instance, I think it would be appropriate for the city of Barstown to put an advertisement in some sort of travel publication or something that says, "Come visit Barstown." But when you start looking at who that benefits, it doesn't really benefit the, the public at large. It's thanking these people in this program, and it benefits those individuals. Now, that's the way I would read that, and if you all want to disagree with that, that's fine.
A lot of their issues, they don't, they say, okay, sponsors X number of dollars, but they don't say this X number of dollars is going to go for this expense, this expense or this expense.
Right, no, that's not.
Have to do, all the other ones have a specific capital project, or the other one is the security.
Well, this is an objection, we got, we got the application late and before we could get it on to the thing. It does say it would go towards scholarship.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't, I didn't have that until this, this dominated, so.
Now, the other thing that I want the public to be aware of is that, that we, we're taking this a little more seriously now. There's a, there's a case, I think it's out of Ottoman Park, that recently held in terms of appropriation of funds, that if the council misappropriates funds, they can't then come back and use public funds to make it right or shift things or ask for the money back. The court in that case actually held that the individual council people are individually liable for that money. So I, I've encouraged the council to take it very seriously for obvious reasons, you know, this, if you do something wrong here, you can't go back and say, if, if we give something to the, to the Roland Williams Scholarship Foundation or something, we can't go back to Roland and say, "Give us the money back." You can do that, but if it goes to, to court, somebody sues them about it, the court, based on that, would say, "We all pay, if it's $5,000, $6,000, it's $1,000 each." I mean, that's the way that, that case reads, so I think, and, and just to let you know, I'm pretty comfortable with all of these, I just, except for the one, so I'm not trying to scare you off here, I'm just saying that you should take it very seriously, it's not something to just, you know, wink, wink, nod, nod, and bob and rumpel, you know.
Mayor, if I could, I don't remember who was on the council at that time, but we had, I was sponsoring the Marion County Honor Guard, and if you're not familiar with what they do, they're the ones that do the last rites for military people in Nelson County and other communities, and we felt uncomfortable giving them a donation, so the council, we personally handed up about $50 apiece to give them a donation because we felt like it was a worthwhile cause, but we felt uncomfortable giving them city funds for that particular reason, so that's what you're basically saying.
Yes, and, and we've actually encouraged, as a matter of fact, Chief had something just recently, and she came to me and said, "Is this something the city can contribute to?" I said, "I don't believe so," but encouraged the council, and I think there were some donations that they made, and I, we are always welcome to do that. It's just when you're using city or public funds, you have to be very cautious, and that's what we're trying to do, just to let everybody know.
Okay, well, just, just rough math, the four requests that we're talking about already exceed the entire budget, so I think there's going to have to be some compromise amongst the sponsors and the rest of the council as to what you all think would be a fair amount in light of the fact that we need the entire budget, it's $25,000 for the year, and this is 27,5 requests that are on the table at this point. Yes, Mayor?
So we weren't hearing from the people actually in the audience, so they weren't going to speak toward their donation request, or you were just introducing them?
I'd like, I'd like to make a suggestion. It's okay, Mayor.
This is our first go around with this stuff.
Yeah, I went, I went through this budget with all the requests. There's a total of $28,500 worth of requests on here from the organizations that have requested this money, and our budget is only $25,000. So in going back through here, this is just me, I'm the only one speaking, you all can take whatever this work, but if the Barstown, Old Barstown Village, if it's requested $10,000, if they got $5,000. If the Stephen Foster Drama Association, if they requested $10,000, if they got $5,000. If the Nelson County Citizens, Black Citizen Arts Council, if they requested $5,000 and they got $2,500. And the Butter Milk Days Festival requested $2,500 and they got $2,000, then you've got $14,500 worth of donation, you've got $9,500 left for the rest of the year.
That sounds, so that, are you asking, would you like to allow some of the proof to be out of place?
No, because I think that shows the need, why, why they're needing this. I mean, it goes with the amount and why they're, they're needing these funds, and we need to hear that, because I agree with Councilman Shepples about, you know, decreasing the funds, but some of these organizations really need those funds, so, you know, maybe the buildings are getting ready to be warned about the safety of it, the ability to continue opening a village up. I mean, I, I want to hear what they have to say. They're here, and I think they should be able to present.
Yeah, we've got, usually when it's kind of an unscathed agenda, we try to keep the discussion to about three minutes per person, so maybe if each organization that has someone here would like to have someone speak on their behalf for a few minutes, we'd be happy to. All the requests, I think, are pretty detailed, and I think, obviously, we all agree that they're much needed in the community, so is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of Old Barstown Village?
Mayor, I'm Kathleen Mulligan, I'm a treasurer at Old Barstown Village, and in addition to the information we put in our application, I would just like to point out the importance of our location to school groups, to tourists, and local people who use the site. The cabins that we referred to and asked for money are historic, and we have known for a while that they needed chinking. There's an expert named Michael Bailey working up at Willits doing some historic restoration work up there, and he came down, he's an expert in chinking, and he said, "If you don't re-chink these cabins over the next five, seven years, they will collapse." He said it would cost about $7,500 per cabin to bring them up to snuff. So we're embarking on a program of fundraising, we, we hope to do one or two cabins a year and get it done. I would also point out that this is a beautiful location in Barstown, you drive past it all the time, it's scenic, it's attractive, it's a cornerstone of the historic district, and yes, we're, we're pretty desperate for money, we don't make a profit at the end of each year, but we do serve over 12,000 tourists a year who come to see our collections, and I think our museum really adds to the fabric of Barstown. I appreciate your consideration of our request.
Thank you, Kathleen. A number of school groups also come to the site as a tourist traffic.
Oh, yes, the local schools, county schools, and schools from Jefferson County, you get a, a number, a huge number of school groups. We're an educational institution.
Boy Scout groups as well as the reenactment groups also.
We got the reenactment there, which is living history, open to the public at least twice a year, and the Boy Scouts now, they have their jamboree in the village every year, and they're now actually using our property as a, kind of a meeting place for their, their troop. So we serve a lot of different organizations with our, our location, and I would also remind the council, this property that the village sits on is city property, it's leased to the state, and then they turn some leases back to us. So my thinking is that we're partners with not just the state, who doesn't do anything to help any of the nonprofits, but with the city, and this is city property, it's a city location, city organization, and your contribution would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Do you have anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the Stephen Foster story out there with glass?
I'm Johnny Warren, Executive Artistic Director of the Stephen Foster Drama Association. I didn't go into great detail in our application because I do know everyone is familiar with the situation that we have faced in December. The amphitheater facility was closed by the state citing structural and safety concerns, and at that point in time, that seemed to be the end of the Stephen Foster story, just shy of 60 years of producing the show. In addition to our Broadway musicals that we present and our live music concert series, essentially our summer entertainment in Barstown, our only professional arts organization in the community and our only entertainment venue on the scale and seating capacity that we have, we were able to negotiate an extension, so to speak. that we have, we were able to negotiate, um, uh, an extension, so to speak. Uh, we were granted the ability to make temporary repairs to get through this sixtieth anniversary season, um, with the knowledge that following this season, the amphitheater must be torn down. Um, and so, our county was granted a lease, uh, of the facility, and we were granted the opportunity to raise the money to make the repairs, and also to rebuild the facility once it's torn down. Um, we're at a point now where, uh, through the help of so many in the community, we have raised enough money to, to build the structure itself. Um, but that money will not address even the doors for that facility, um, much less sound, lighting, uh, sets for the Stephen Foster Story that would need to be rebuilt, will not be able to be salvaged in that process. Um, and so, we're looking at a mountain of fundraising ahead, ahead of us, in order to open the sixty-first, uh, season, and, and to begin the new chapter of the legacy. Um, we're, we've been overwhelmed by the support that we've had from this community, uh, from agencies and from individuals, um, and we very much like to count, uh, our city as part of that support. Any questions at all? I have the answer for you. Thank you all so much.
Next, we have Nelson County Black Citizens Arts Council, anyone that would like to speak on their behalf?
Mayor Eaton and members of the council, Barstown City Council, my name is Carrie Stivers, and I'm a president of the Barstown, of Nelson County Black Citizens Arts Council, and I'm coming before you today to ask and, uh, hopefully receive help on our building. We're not only a art council, but also a preservationist. I brought some pictures here today to show you. Our, our, uh, organization is an asset for the whole city and Nelson County, because we've involved ourselves with a lot of things that the city has done. Uh, our school, we, uh, have a, the school, the old schoolhouse is located over on First Street, and here in Barstown. It was the first formal public school for children in Nelson County, and it started in nineteen oh five, and continued until nineteen twenty-three, when it rose, uh, went across the road from one, to one of the Rosenwald Schools. Our school, our, uh, school building has, uh, is on the National Register for Historical Properties, and we're a member of the Barstown Histor, Histor, I'm saying Histor, but Historical Society, and we've, uh, uh, worked many times with the city in their centennial operations. Uh, we, uh, are busy with, uh, the tourists, we hope that our place would be a tourist organization. Right now, I can proudly say that we were the first to have the, uh, adult education, and which was sponsored by the Barstown Board of Education, until they outgrew our building and went to St. Monica's. We've had our building to be a daycare center, attached to a Newover situation, a school, uh, family reunions, business, men's, um, uh, meetings, home, uh, reunions. We feel that our building is very, a big, a big asset to Barstown. And just as, as well as we're, we are proud of things that go along with Barstown here as other organizations are, we're proud of ours, and we're proud to help out whenever we can. Um, this is something that really is dear to, uh, the black people of Barstown, because one of our ladies who went to this school at one time was asked by a tourist, "Where are all the colored people in camp?" And so, we were proud to say that Barstown did pass the first ordinance for open housing, so she wasn't gonna find us behind the railroad tracks. So, we were proud of that, and we're proud of the school, we, we really don't want anything to happen to it, um, it's, it's, it's remarkable places you'll see there, and that's about all. Thank you.
If there's anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the Butter Milk Days Foundation?
Yes. Real quick, can I? So, this, uh, my name, my name is Jeff Stone, and I am the, uh, the Schoolhouse Restorations Chair. Um, I, uh, did wanna, I was kinda sum up, but there was one additional thing that we, one additional ask that we were going to ask, and that was in-kind engineering services from the city as well. So, in addition to the five thousand, we were asking for that. Uh, the important thing about it is, I really wanted to speak to is, this is for us a sort of a gap, a gap situation for us. Uh, we think that it ties into the village, we think that our history ties into the, uh, the, the drama, the Stephen Foster Story, all of these things, it's important to us. And I think that the one thing that's missing here, in a city who is historic, and their coin of the realm, for lack of a better word, is, is, is imparting that history, there is a gap here, and that gap is the African-American portion of that. I think this speaks to that. This is a small portion of it. Uh, Kelly, Kelly and I will be heading the, uh, the construction, uh, phases of, of the project. Uh, I have, in the past, had several projects that I have headed here in Barstown, Jedeco, I don't know if you remember, Jedeco, Barstown, the first, the second three phases of those were my first projects in the opera, as a project engineer. I'm retired operations manager at a distillery in, in, uh, in, uh, Shoddy, in Louisville. Uh, but these are things that I think that it's a piece of history, and when, when a, when a tourist comes to Barstown, what they're looking for is, they wanna hear that history of the Stephen Foster Story, they wanna hear the history of the Civil War. What they're not hearing, and what's clear is, they're not hearing, is they're not hearing that last portion of it, and we should all be proud of that. And when you talk about, I mean, Congressman, I mean, Councilman Don's spoke to it, when you talk about a, a benefit to the whole society, that's exactly what you're talking about. You have to look at it as a whole, and I think that we're missing the point if we don't do that. And so, it's really important to me that I get that in. Uh, if you would pass it out, uh, so there are four key deliverables that we're hoping from this project. Uh, education, which takes us back to the foundation of what that building was for. I, I mean, this was a school building, when there wasn't no school building for us, so what happens here is, this seed was planted back in, in, uh, nineteen oh five, back in nineteen oh five, and the reason why I'm a college graduate, and the reason why I have my degrees is, that seed came to fruition for me, not only me, my sons, uh, my, my mother, my mother, who really believed in education, and got her degree a few years before she died. These are all important things that are important to all of us, to make sure that we have the whole piece of the pie. So, I really appreciate, uh, I, I skipped over a lot of stuff, but I really appreciate your consideration on this, and I would like to amend that this in-kind engineering, which my understanding there's a ladder for, and we have received in the past. Thank you.
Last request, I think, is anyone here to speak on behalf of the Butter Milk Days Foundation?
Uh, good afternoon, my name is Joey Chekels, and our request is for our security and, and our parking. The twenty-five hundred, it would be a drop in the bucket compared to what it costs us to actually put on buttermilk, and buttermilk is for the whole community, not just for one community. So, I'll keep it simple and polite and say, you know, I'm not as, you know, as important as a probably a historical society, but this is, this involves our young people and all, it takes all to make it work.
Okay. Just back to the expression about the level of funding that we feel is mainly aligned with these requests, Councilman Chekels has expressed his thoughts on trying to come to a number, we're not spending the entire budget tonight, uh, leave some money remaining for the rest of the year, I'm sure, I'm sure after tonight, in public speaking, we're gonna see some, a lot more letters, uh, come, come to us, uh, which is, you know, the purpose of this funding is for community development, so, if anyone else would like to discuss some of the funding levels, do you want to?
Well, I just threw this out there, because this is the first, this is the first wave of requests we had, and it would be kind of selfish of us, or any other members, that we got, that we donated all this money in the first, in the first two weeks of the budget year, and not had anything left over for the rest of the year. And all, all the requests that we had are important requests, and, and I'm sure much-needed requests, but, uh, to be fair for the whole community, we can't, we couldn't, I wouldn't think, and this is just me speaking, that we give all the money with the very first night we have.
Especially since this is gonna be a lesson year, we might have another council spending the second half of the budget.
That's true.
But, but we can also look this way, it's an unlikely event, I suppose, that next, by May or June or next year, you know, the, the rest of the money hadn't been spent, I guess these organizations would come back and respend it, for the addition.
Doesn't knock them out for the rest of the year, or the rest of the cycle, uh, if they get this request, and even though it is, it may be less than they initially requested, doesn't mean they can't come back at a later date and request further funds if we have the budgetary, uh, ability to do that.
When we do a super project, I mean, I hope we save money on it, and don't spend as much as we budget, but, uh, like, community thing, that's, that's really be there to be spent, you know? So, if we don't spend it all by May or June, come back, I guess, and respend, you know, for the rest of the, for the.
I think we're all in agreement here that these are all worthwhile requests, so that's not an issue here, it's just a matter of what to do with the, uh, how to distribute the, the grants.
I think we can take the parent administrative portion of the budget and probably spend a couple of community grants, yeah, millions of dollars.
Okay, uh, Bill, would you like then to make a formal motion, uh, for the, the dog announced that you specified for these four requests?
Well, if, that, if, if some, you know, if someone thinks there should be more, or less, whatever, then that's, um, that's up to the council. If somebody, if someone thinks that, uh, some requests are, are worth more than others or whatever, then that's, uh, but that's just me, when I was looking at the, at the requests this morning, before we came to the council, and saw how you could, is evenly spread out to the needs that they want, and still have some little money left over for the rest of the year, that's just, uh, that was, that was just one man's opinion on that, but, uh, if you, if I gave, if you gave ten thousand to the, to the Drama Association, ten thousand to Old Barstown Village, and five thousand to the Black Citizens Arts Council, there's your budget. So, in fairness to the, to the community, I just thought if you, if you cut them all in half, or more or less, or if you thought.
Except for buttermilk, and I can understand why, because with they have a prior funding level, you're just taking them back to their, from their request to the prior funding level, and I can understand that.
Yeah, so, but, uh.
You don't wanna cut them, you don't wanna increase your community grant and then cut them.
Well, in the years past, they, they had, at one time, you're twenty-five, but I think last year, it was two thousand, and that pretty much takes care of our traffic flow and, uh, and the security issues that we have with that, and the parking issues that, you know, John, the work with that along that, because we have, they're, uh, they've, they're kind of, some of their, but we have to be able to maintain that. Uh, of course, I know the Citizen Black Citizens Arts Building is in, is in dire need of work, uh, it's, uh, it's been neglected for quite some time, so, uh, but, uh, that's just, this is one man's opinion.
Um, I thank you for your, your suggestion, I think it's a great one, and the reason why I wanted to hear, um, from them was the need, um, just like the Stephen Foster Story, you know, they have needed, they were shut down, um, you know, the village, they need, they're chinking. Um, but one is not in operation at all, and that would be the Black Arts Council. They can't even, uh, get the roofer until someone comes and checks to see if they can go on top of the roof. I don't know if everyone knew that, they're not in operation at all. And, um, they're, um, they weren't able to apply for the, uh, the funds that were available through a national organization, and, um, since we are, we're, we're a community about preservation, um, we're, we're a community about history, um, I would ask that we would increase, um, at least their portion, because, not, not the five thousand, but give them more than twenty-five hundred, um, because they need someone to be on top of the roof. Um, I, I went out to look at the, um, the building, and, and no one's gonna come and do the work until they get the evaluation, until someone gets up there and says it's safe for the crew to even start working. That costs money. You know, we, we only hear, they're, they're trying to go through it real quick, but I just wanted to kinda give a little bit more information about what they're going through. I, I know what the drama's going through, I know what the village is going through, and I know we only have limited funds, so I, I hope that we can come to a consensus.
I would agree with Councilwoman Copeland, uh, as far, if you look at it based on need, I mean, uh, the Nelson County Black Citizens Arts Council is definitely one that stands out as far as, uh, as, as need, they're all worthwhile causes, they're all in need, but, uh, and I agree, Mr. Stone so eloquently put it, uh, you know, the African-American community, as far, historically, I think, is underserved, uh, and, and should be recognized for that, so I would be definitely in favor of, uh, at least bumping up that one particular grant amounts, let's say, to three thousand versus twenty-five hundred. Is that a reasonable number?
I think, I guess to get things moving along, the mayor was looking for a motion earlier, I'll go ahead and put this in the motion. Then, I'm gonna move that we, uh, that we approve the Old Barstown Village's request amount of five thousand, the Stephen Foster Story's amount of five thousand, the Nelson County Black Citizens Arts Council request amount of three thousand, and the Butter Milk Days amount of two thousand.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'd like a second.
A second, the council knows, any other discussion? Something comes to fifteen thousand out of the twenty-five thousand now. We have motion, second, any, any other comments or discussion? Seeing, uh, all in favor, then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ours. Motion's good. Motion's approved. Thank you all for all the ones who gave time and energy to these requests, and, and given us this information to deliberate these requests on, I appreciate that, thank you very much. Okay, uh, so now, now we got some money coming back our way, thank goodness. We've got two, uh, grants that have been awarded, so Chief Cresson, you wanna talk about the Homeland Security Grant that you all received?
Yeah, we, uh, applied for a grant, uh, for five vests in the amount of three thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars, so that money will be coming back to us, uh, where we can utilize that for officers, uh, instead of taking that money out of the city's budget, uh, and we'll be able to outfit our officers with bulletproof vests, and so we're excited about that. We, we have applied for TASER, a grant for TASERS, and we're waiting to see if we're awarded that too, so, fingers crossed we'll also get, uh, that grant too, so we're hoping to hear back on that soon.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Uh, Rashay is not here, but I'll report after, also from the Tourism and Arts Council, uh, our Historic Review Board of Preservation, Certified Local Government received a grant in the amount of ninety-five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, from the Office of Historic Preservation, Kentucky Arts and Heritage Council, and those funds, I have already had a budget matched from, from the city of sixty-seven, or excuse me, sixty-three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and this will be used for workshops to help strengthen historic preservation in Barstown. Rashay hosts a number of workshops throughout the year, uh, and that's what this money will go towards, and we have already budgeted the match that was required in the grant request, so, it's good news for Rashay's, uh, office of ninety-five hundred and sixty-nine... request, so it's good news for Shea's Office of $9,569 grant that we received.
May I speak on that, ma'am?
Yes.
Once a year, we go to DC to advocate for these funds, and the state of Kentucky was the first one to ask an elected official to go to DC and advocate. It was something now that all the states are doing. And so when we think of Kentucky being, you know, the last one to do things, I, I just want to pat on the back and say we were the first to do it. And, you know, we fought hard for these funds, which were to be taken off the plate, and so I'm, I'm very thankful that our city received the grant and other cities as well. Thank you.
Okay, next item is minutes. If everybody's had a chance from the June 26 meeting, no corrections or additions, we can prove them by unanimous consent. Under financial report, Tracy, I don't think you had anything, do you, or do you?
The audit has started, started July 2nd. It's about it right now.
I wouldn't announce against tying into the financial report. We will have a finance committee meeting on the 19th, that's next Thursday, 5:00 p.m. Main items that need be discussed will be the approvals to the fire department, also renovation of City Hall, which had an effect on the cable and internet, and engineering department, and then also renovations at the public works department. How we're going to fund those particular projects will be the main items on that agenda for the finance committee meeting on June 19, or excuse me, July 19. And then also, I forgot, there's also about $9 million worth of water and sewer projects we've got to figure out how to pay for too, so that'll be on there as well. Some of that's carried over from this year, but probably about $7 million will be new projects, there's about $2 million carried over. So we've got quite a bit on our plate, major capital projects, and we need to have some discussion with the finance committee before we bring it formally to the council, because there'll probably be some budget amendments down the road. Let's see, under ordinances, we have a second reading of B 2018, excuse me, B 2018-14 fees for public safety services, Tim, you're getting ready?
That's what everybody's waiting for, Mayor, and you finally got to it. This is the highlight, people. Ordinance B 2018-14, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance related to the Chapter 36 Departments of the City of Barstown Code Of Ordinances. The City Council of Barstown, Kentucky does ordain as follows, that the amendment made to Chapter 36 Departments, Section 36.26, user fees for the deployment of public safety services of the City of Barstown's Code Of Ordinances as follows. 36.26, user fees for the deployment of public safety services, subsection A. Add, the type and extent of service billed for and as listed below shall be defined in the City of Barstown Fire Department Standard Operating Procedures, end edition. Subsection C, or excuse me, E. Citizens that reside at or own property, end edition, and, strike the, Barstown, strike city limits, and, strike the Barstown, Nelson County, strike volunteer fire department service area, shall be exempt from any user fees. Fees schedule, strike. The following will all be a strike until I end the strike. Simple extrication, less than 15 minutes, $100. Extended extrication, more than 15 minutes, $200. Hazmat cars and trucks, less than 30 gallons, $150. Hazmat cars and trucks, greater than 30 gallons, up to $500. Car fire, engine compartment, only $125. Car fire extension, extension in passenger compartment, $250. Large truck fire, up to $500. Technical rescue, up to $500. Traffic control, $50 per hour per truck and $25 per hour per man. Itemized expenses, actual cost, end the strike. Add, and the following will all be additions until I end the addition. Motor vehicle accident incidents, level one, $554. Level two, $677. Add-on services, extrication, $1,461. Creating a landing zone, $488. Additional time on scene, engine billed at $488 per hour. Truck billed at $560 per hour. Miscellaneous equipment billed at $366 an hour. Hazmat, level one, $784. Level two, $2,800. Level three, $6,608. Includes three hours of on-scene time, each additional hour at $336 per hazmat team. Additional time on scene for all levels of service, engine billed at $488 per hour. Truck billed at $560 per hour. Miscellaneous equipment billed at $336. Fire investigation, fire investigation team, $308 per hour. Technical rescues includes trench rescue, confined space rescue, rope rescue, structural collapse rescues. Itemized response, each incident will be billed at custom mitigation rates deemed usual, customary, and reasonable, UCR. These incidents will be billed, itemized per apparatus, per hour, per trained rescue person, per hour, plus rescue products used. Minimum billed, $448 for the first response vehicle, plus $56 per rescue person. Additional rates, $448 per hour per response vehicle, and $56 per hour per rescue person. Miscellaneous additional time on scene, engine billed at $448 an hour. Truck billed at $560 per hour. Miscellaneous equipment billed at $336, end edition. This, all ordinances in conflict hereby or hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force immediately upon its passage, approval, and publication as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. It was a second reading, so I'd ask for a motion then to approve ordinance number B 2018-14 as presented this evening. A motion, Councilwoman Copeland.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Williams, is there any discussion? I would note then again, just to reiterate, that it does state that citizens that reside on property in the city limits or in the county are exempt from these fees, so I know they might have got some of your attention, but the purpose of that is not really so much for local residents, it's a lot of, you know, out-of-town situations, you know, trucks coming through here, major accidents that would warrant this type of work. We need a way of funding people to be on those sites of those accidents and extra extractions and so forth, so.
One other comment was, I think there was a little misconception that these were the first time that we were going to have these type of fees, but we already have these fees in our ordinance. We're updating the list to get a few more items, I guess, that are common now, and we're updating it to increase the fees, because even the increased fees don't cover our costs on these things. So it's, it's basically going to apply to any non-resident that comes in and maybe has automobile accident or trucking company that spills hazmat stuff all over, they're worried we've got to spend a lot of resources here that our citizens already pay for through taxes, and they have not, and their insurance company will reimburse it, so, to them, so it's, it's just a charge to the person's insurance, non-resident's insurance company, basically.
And not just the citizens of Barstown, the citizens of the county, the whole county.
Even, a citizen of Barstown, even if their insurance is covered, that's still not going to be charged, that won't be deemed on their insurance.
So we're, you know, we made a major investment in equipment. Since these first, these first fees were drafted, there's a lot more hazmat equipment than we have now, best in trench rescue equipment that wasn't on, we probably didn't own a lot of that at the time these first fees were set, and I think Chief Natalie told us that the fees, these fees were not something we just made up, these fees were recommended by a certified organization that deals with this type of rescue efforts around the country, so it's a nationally recognized standard charge for the hours involved with this type of work. Okay. We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion left? Since it's a second reading, I'll ask for individual votes, so all in favor, signify by saying aye.
What? Oh, yep, go ahead, Bill.
Starting with Councilman Kelly.
Aye.
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 Ordinance is approved. Anybody in the staff, any reports, any committee reports? Under new business, then we have a reappointment of Tiger Houston to the Cable TV Programming Committee, a three-year term that would be expiring July 1st, like, 2021. So I have motion for the reappointment, he's agreed to serve another three-year term. Motion by Councilman Kelly, but a second. Second, Councilman Dunn, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Next item, under new business, I'll let our city attorney, Tim Butler, speak to it, providing our code enforcement board.
Yes, Mayor, the reason this has come up, it's, it's been kind of swirling around for a little bit, but right now we have less than a quorum's worth of members left on the code enforcement board, and that's caused, you know, an issue that we're going to have to resolve. And so there's, there's a few other things that have happened also, that there's been some changes in the underlying state statutes, statewide legislation relating to code enforcement boards that would make, that would require us to make some changes to our ordinance and potentially the process. I've had some discussion, late last year in particular, I had some discussion with KLC, the legal staff up there, about some of the issues that we had and my concerns with some due process issues that we were having, whether what we were doing was exactly in line with what we should be doing and completely fair and above board, that I think they, they suggested that we deal with by looking at our, our ordinance and potentially redoing the ordinance. The other things that you all should be aware of is that our code, our current code enforcement officer, Jesse Wee, who's relatively new on the job, has been doing a really good job about getting voluntary compliance. We've kind of changed our focus from, to more in terms of compliance, getting compliance with our requirements, and it's been seen, either fairly or unfairly, it's been seen by some of the public that the code enforcement board was, you know, more punitive, and what we found is, is that we were, we were assessing fines and fees and things and not getting compliance. Well, we've shifted that to look more at compliance. Amazingly enough, we, we haven't really had need for the code enforcement board then for the past year, we've not.
Two years.
Yeah, almost two years, but definitely for the last calendar year. And so the mayor asked that I look at this in, in consultation with KLC, and some of these options are, I think basically you have two options, and I would recommend one over the other, but KLC said that, that based on what, the circumstance in total that I would, I gave them, that they had recommended that, they said that it might be best to, at least right now, repeal the current ordinance that constitutes the Historic Review Board. I'm sorry? Code enforcement, I'm sorry. Yeah, code enforcement. Yeah, there you go. I have that on my mind for some reason. Code enforcement board, to, to eliminate this section of the code enforcement board, in part, right now, because we don't, there's not particularly a need for it, and again, some of the ones that we did have, we had some issues with that I didn't really feel comfortable with in terms of meeting, completely meeting the requirements, at least the state statutes, and then due process, which is, is an overarching principle over everything that we do administratively. And then at some point, now, another option would be to reconstitute the board, but we reconstitute the board, they don't really have much to do right now, and we don't anticipate that they would have too much to do. What, again, what KLC, the option that I presented to them and that they were on board with, as a matter of fact, they said that that's what they would recommend, is to at least temporarily repeal, basically suspend the code enforcement board, and then look over the issues that we would need. They've got some new model ordinances and things that we would have to tweak to meet our requirements if we decided to go back with that, and then if we decide to go that route to reconstitute the code enforcement board. Again, part of the issues that we've had is that it was seen as punitive and not really, not really achieving the goal, which is compliance, you know, get people to do what we want to do. I'd have to commend Jesse, he's not a particularly imposing figure, so I don't think he's threatening people, that he's, he's getting compliance involuntarily so, and I'd commend him for that, because I think that's, that's good government.
I know him, I feel like he probably works well in Boston, and has the perfect approach, I would think, to tie these things around. Now, I guess that means we also will need to change all the ordinances where we have a civil fee to just make it, in other words, we still have enforcement, but it'll be a criminal process, and rather have our own civil board where we get the fines and keep the fines in our budget, we can refer to county attorney's office to prosecute under that. And as county attorney, we prosecute it, we had one, we spent a whole bunch of time on, but they wouldn't comply.
One of the things, and I, you know, when Matthew gets wind of this, he may be up on the roof, I don't know, but, but as long as it's not a violation, I think we're all right. There's, that's the key, is that we're, because of the way we're proceeding, we do have the perfect opportunity to do this and kind of hit the reset button and, and decide if we want to go forward with this. One of my tasks is, yes, we have to, we have to undo some of this, but when we did it, what we did is we did this as an option to traditional enforcement, so I don't think we, by repealing this, really in total, we wouldn't leave ourselves without the means of enforcement if somebody really wanted to play hardball. We would not lose that, and I'd want to make that clear to everybody, but we would.
I thought it would be sense, but since we're not having any activity on the board, it wouldn't be sense having it, because it would have to meet some anyhow to be an active board, and we'd have to make sure we got appointments, and then when you're meeting for really no purpose, and nothing, no issues come for you, you're still going to have staff there to do the minutes? There's some requirements there, you have to have a legal counsel on certain things, and, so that's, that's an expense, and.
And actually, so that you all are aware, we, we, the cost of the program in total, really, it never was self-sustaining, really, in terms of cost. You know, one of the attractions, attractive parts of supposedly is you get to keep fees here, but we've never really collected, we've got liens on property that we, you know, we may never collect, you know, so it never, it never was, quote, a moneymaker, and some people see that as such, and I think that's a misconception. And so I, I fully appreciate the opinion of KLC and what they said to do, and if that's something that you all would like, what I would do is move forward with making sure that if we pass an ordinance repealing this, that we repeal, that it's kind of surgical and only repeals what we want to repeal, not, you know, too broad.
When I first looked at this all ahead, I mean, I thought it was a good idea, and a lot of your discussion, and what you said, Matt, I would support the proposal, the idea that it's up to me to, to the council take a, you know.
There haven't been any code issues that have gotten to the point that need, needed to come before, I tell you, in the time that I've been back in office, that's almost two years, or a year and a half, and I think three of the former members, when it came up time for renewing their appointment, they chose to not, I'm not, I'm not going to serve anymore. And I think it's something that has to do with the fact they don't really have any need to make sense.
Well, and I didn't want to go too deep into the weeds here, but the problem with reconstituting, you know, making additional appointments is we would have to basically train them and get them up to speed with something that needs work, so we'd have to retrain them potentially afterward.
And the statute also required, you know, if they want to have hearings, that they had to have training in due process and legal procedure, procedures, and then you have to have an attorney there too, and the city attorney either has to present the case or be act as a hearing staff, and then we have to hire another, well, of course, we pay the city attorney too, and we'd have to pay another attorney to be there for all that, and it's just, it's, it just was the low volume.
Like I said, right now is the perfect opportunity to do it, and unless someone has a major objection, I'll, I'll move forward with it. I'm, we're not asking for a vote or anything, I just wanted to let you all know, and the mayor's aware of it, I just, I just think that that. I just, I just think that that, to me, is the obvious, and KLC would agree, that that's the obvious route to take, and then at the appropriate time, if we see the need to reconstitute, we can reconstitute, we're not prohibited. It's not one-way street here, we can't help moving.
I'll introduce ordinance if you're prepared, Tim.
Well, it's not ready.
I know, I know it's not ready for night, but I just want to let you know so you won't prepare and come up here, well, nobody's going to introduce it, you know, I feel always trouble.
I appreciate that.
Anyone have any other questions of Tim and his discussion of this matter? Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
City council members, anyone have anything they want to bring before the council group to sustain, yes, Tim?
I'd just like to make a comment. This is primarily for Mrs. Stivers and Jeff and Kelly, I think he's gone, but I really appreciate you guys stepping up to save this moment, Cherry House. It is so important to our community, and I hope to get it done. I really do.
Any other council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, and Jeff, I really appreciate the conversation we had yesterday regarding your project that you're working on too, it was pretty detailed, and I appreciate that. And the other thing I want to mention too is, just a reminder, any council member that wants to view the new site for the fire department, got tomorrow, you can go. I had an opportunity to go today, and it's pretty nice, pretty nice facilities.
Just say pretty nice, but it's very functional. I mean, gosh, for the investment, we could never have built what we got.
I went yesterday, and Chief was nice enough to take me around, and it couldn't be more perfect for that, for that situation. I mean, with the ability of them to build the dormitories, and then there's just going to be some slight modifications for showering facilities, it's absolutely a win-win.
Four-way doors on each end, or two on each end, and four doors.
Thank you, Chief.
Other opportunities, Mark, five?
If anybody can make time, some other guy, just call me.
Chief, Councilman Hope?
Yes, I had mentioned before a program that I was hoping to bring the program to the city, but it takes a year to do so. So it's the New Roots Program, and it's a, like a fresh market type of program, and the organization I'm going to be picking up in Lowell at Chickasaw, and the reason why this organization was started, because it was founded on the belief that fresh food is a basic human right, and some individuals may not be able to go to even the local Kroger or to the farmer's market because of funds. So I'm going to pick these fresh shares up, and it has to be paid for by Friday. You can either call me, or you can go onto newroots.com and order it. It is, a share price is, let me see, WIC is six dollars, limited resources is twelve bucks, and if you can afford to pay for it, it's twenty-five dollars. The, there's a number to call, and it's five zero two, five zero nine, six seven seven zero, and that's for a SNAP recipient, because it's illegal to go online and put a food stamp card on and order. So you have to call it in. If you have any questions, my number is online, you could call me, but I will be picking these shares up. It has to be paid for by this Friday, and I will deliver them on next Thursday, which is the nineteenth. So if you have any questions, feel free to call me, but I really feel that this is a benefit for our community, we're such a giving community, and we're always wanting to help others, and I think this is a way that everyone can have fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, and be able to have a good source of food. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? We've got some cemetery deeds, we have Carol Carlo for two graves, Mary Natalie for one grave, and Barbara Fletcher for two graves, we'll do that by unanimous consent, as far as announcements, just reiterate, our finance committee meeting next Thursday, the nineteenth, at five o'clock. As you know, a few weeks ago, Bethlehem and their bond attorney came to present a municipal bond request to us, that requires a resolution as well as a public hearing, so the public hearing will be at noon on July the thirtieth. We're going to have, probably discuss the resolution and perhaps take action on it on the twenty-fourth. So, we will need to, the council will have to convene on August thirtieth. The reason that got pushed back is that when they advertised the hearing, they used Bethlehem's physical address instead of the city council, City Hall's physical address, so they had to read, advertise it, so it pushed it back a week, so that's why it's back to August thirtieth.
No, July.
I mean, excuse me, July thirtieth, I'm sorry.
Well, it's a special city council meeting, man.
It'd be the thirtieth, yes.
Yes.
And then July twenty-fourth is when we're going to discuss the resolution. So I, I wrote August for some reason, it's July. Then, Chief, you have something to say about the ISO survey that's coming up?
We had notification today, it's going to be, what is it, twenty-two seconds.
Twenty-two seconds.
Good, that'll give us, let's, thirty-day things in there, something that'll nail those down, I think that's right.
Okay, unless there's anything else I would ask?
I have one more thing. I'd just like to say thank you to the new Main Street Director, Randy Mouser. She did a phenomenal job on the street concert this year, and I think most of Barstown and Nelson County enjoyed it, and how important that is, is that, you know, those funds are not directly coming from the city, you know, they have to go out and raise those funds to have, or get sponsorship, so I'd just like to thank her for her hard work, she's new, and I think it went off without a hitch.
Thank you. Anything else? If I have to ask for a motion for adjournment?
So will.
Motion for a council second, we have a second.
Right.
Councilman Kelly, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of course, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you all. I love this city.